I'd like to call this January 26, 2023 Board of Education Regular Meeting to Order. Mr. Agnastu, can you do the roll call?
Sure. Mrs. Bissell?
Here.
Mrs. Kilbane?
Here.
Mr. Miko?
Here.
Ms. Stochek?
Here.
Mrs. Hausel?
Here.
All present.
We're all here. Can we all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, welcome, everyone. This time I'd like to go over our district goals. As always, financial prudence, community engagement, academic achievement and growth. And just to touch on academic achievement and growth tonight, on Fridays, the first graders at Whitney Elementary have a poetry show. This is an opportunity for students to practice their reading fluency and reading expression. Every week, the first graders receive a new poem, which they practice as a class. This poem then goes into their poetry binder. On Fridays, each student chooses one poem from their binder they would like to showcase and read aloud to their classmates. The poetry show helps reinforce two of the pride pillars. Students show pride by being engaged and respectful of their classmates as they're presenting the poetry. And after that, we'll go on to our recognitions. Dr. Reiba?
Thank you, Ms. Hausel. We are going to start with number two, which is our OSBA Student Achievement. So I'll turn it over to Sharon and Haley to do the recognitions for this month.
We have a few recognitions tonight. Thanks, everyone, for coming. This is great.
Who do we want to start with?
I want to start with Kaylee Harrell and Bryce.
And I'm glad I didn't wear what I originally had on because we would've been matching Sharon.
Good evening. My name's Kaylee Harrell from Chapman Elementary. And Mrs. Russo and I are honored to present to you Bryce Oldag, a fifth-grade student at Chapman Elementary. And Mrs. Russo is going to talk about why Bryce is our extra mile recipient at Chapman.
All right. As you can see, Bryce is always overly excited. That's why we have him going the extra mile. If you've ever been at Chapman when kids are arriving, then you've heard Bryce coming into school. Bryce comes to school running, jumping, and smiling every day. When I think of Bryce, he for sure goes the extra mile, and these are the reasons why. Bryce is a super kid who embraces his differences and lets them shine. Bryce is adventurous and takes risks. He pushes himself to try the impossible and does it all with a smile. Bryce is spirited and uses his emotions and energy to help change the world. Bryce is fierce. He takes a stand in what he believes in and works hard every day. From this day forward, Bryce will be known as the super kid from Chapman Elementary who's going to conquer the world.
Want to get a picture, Bryce? You take a picture? Do you want me to take it, Haley?
Oh, sure.
And Bryce had the biggest smile on his face when he won the award. He was so proud of himself, and he said he was proud of himself, and it was the best moment because he was so surprised, and Mom happened to be there when we got there, so she got to experience it as well.
Thank you.
The second recipient that I'm honored to be able to recognize this evening, our staff who is being recognized for going the extra mile, is Marty Brickner. It is my absolute honor and privilege to recognize Marty for going the extra mile at Chapman Elementary School. For those of you who do not know, Marty is Chapman's head custodian, and our Chapman School family knows him as Mr. Marty. What sets Marty apart from others is that it isn't just a job for him. Marty takes great pride in all that he does. He cares for the entire Chapman community, not solely our facility, going above and beyond in every aspect of his work. You might find Mr. Marty sporting a rock star wig for Right to Read Week or slipping a few extra dollars to the PTA for the student who forgot their book fair money. He builds strong relationships with our students, staff, and families. It isn't uncommon to find Marty greeting students at the front doors at arrival or crouched down helping a student struggling with a math problem. First grader Isabella says that Marty, Mr. Marty, always keeps our building super clean. Third grader Luke says that Mr. Marty cares about us, and he always says hi to me. It is evident from the student drawings that adorn his office door just how beloved Mr. Marty is to the Chapman community. Our staff continuously notices Marty's efforts for doing more than what's expected of him. He finds creative solutions to problems we encounter. No matter how hard of a day he has had, you'll always hear a cheerful, "I'll be right there" response to a walkie-talkie call. Staff often stop by and tell me how Marty has gone above and beyond and helped them in some way. Personally, I wouldn't be able to do what I do every day without his support. His organization and preparation manages all of the day-to-day moving pieces that take place within Chapman. Thank you, Marty, for your dedication to Chapman and the Strongsville City School District. We're the lucky ones. Congratulations.
I'm very honored to get this award. Chapman means a lot to me. Bryce is a perfect example of what we have there, just love. Lots of love at Chapman. He's my helper.
And everyone knows who Mr. Marty is. We said who we were coming to visit. Everyone knew exactly what we were talking about, and it's amazing. They said it was smiling their face. It wasn't like, oh, no, not Mr. Marty. You're a great guy. Thank you, Marty.
I'm very honored to get this award.
Thank you.
Want to get a picture?
And this is Mr. Brickner, not Mr. Brechner.
Thank you. Thank you.
Next, we'd like Mr. Wingler to come up.
You had your glasses on. It was like Superman.
All right. Good evening, everyone. So last month, we had a young man that could not make it for, he was one of the first-quarter Polaris students of the quarter. And I called, and they had been, the family was getting ready to go out of town, and I said, "Do you guys want to come back in January?" And they said, "Well, yeah, we definitely want to get dressed up for this event." So I see the family over, and you guys are very well dressed. So I want to bring up Nick Wilson. Come on up, Nick. So Nick is being honored for being, and I explain this every time, but sometimes it's confusing, there's satellite students of the quarter. Those are students that go to a Polaris course at Strongsville, Project Lead the Way course. Nick was honored for being a student of the quarter at Polaris for his, he's in the automotive tech program. But I want to tell a super quick story, because both young men I'm talking about tonight have something very similar that is very important to me. So three years ago, when I was the new kid, and I came to Strongsville, right when the pandemic started, it was really awesome. I didn't get a lot of smiles and waves, and both young men tonight, and I'm going to talk about Billy when he comes up, are very, very unique young men, not only because Nick is a student of the quarter, Nick has a 3.5 GPA for the first semester, but every day since I have met Nick, Nick says hello to me. He smiles. Like, there are, there are bellwether kids. If you're a principal and you don't work in classrooms, there are bellwether kids. When you walk around, that just are always friendly. That's Nick. He is one of the nicest young men, and people think, because I'm not young anymore, that being the new kid isn't always, wasn't hard. It was. But Nick, and I'm going to talk about Billy as well, both of these guys, very, very kind young men, combine it with the fact that he carries a very heavy, for the classes, he takes to Strongsville, gets very good grades, and Mr. Evans called me and said that he is a superstar over at Polaris. So I want to honor Nick for being Polaris student of the quarter.
You want to get a picture?
You guys want to get a picture with him? Come on. Family picture night. The best part, I'll be calling Nick in a few years to do some work on my car if I need it. All right. For our second honorary tonight from the high school, I want to talk a little bit about Billy Williams. Come on up, Billy. So it goes without saying that what I said about Nick is exactly true about Billy. I was just kind of laughing with Billy's mom, the three constants in life, that Billy will be in shorts, he will have a giant water bottle, and he will be really friendly. Billy greets me every day, coming out of the band room, because Billy plays percussion. Billy's an Eagle Scout, as you can see. Billy, come over here so they can see all your hardware. Billy, as I stated last month, or two months ago I was here, we had an Eagle Scout. People don't realize how hard it is to become an Eagle Scout. You have to earn 21 badges, and if those of you can count from far away, Billy earned more than 21. He definitely went above and beyond. Billy carries, first semester at Strongsville High School, he had a 4.6 GPA, got an A in AP Calculus amongst, he got an A in everything. Another young man that is just an absolute pleasure to have gotten to know and said hello to me on my first day, because I remember seeing him come in with that giant water jug. So Billy did something really cool. He created a communication board for the preschool, but I don't want to do it a disservice. I'm going to let him tell you more what he did and why he did it.
So for my Eagle Scout project, I made a thing called a picture exchange communication board, or a PEX board. It uses a combination of pictures and words that correlate with them to help for nonverbal kids and people to be able to communicate with their peers and such, and their caretakers. It helps bridge the gap for the people who cannot speak. And it, the reason I chose this project was that I myself have autism, and I felt that I was really lucky that I got to, I got to be so gifted in what I had. I wanted to be able to make sure that everyone would be able to have the opportunities that I had. Kind of what, that's why I made the board.
This is a smaller version of the board that we could pass around and kind of show everybody, but this is a handheld version. The real version is much bigger. The real version is at the preschool.
It's been installed at preschool, and it's not going to be leaving there for another 30, 40 years.
That's right, and it shouldn't. So he did an amazing thing, and we were blown away when we saw what he did, and we found him and said he needs an award, so.
And he was in the band room when we did.
It's probably where you're going to find him.
Yeah. And you need to get a copyright on that, because I'm sure other people would use it down the line, so you might have created something really big.
Yeah, amazing.
You really had someone else who made like, like at my mother's district, she had someone who made like, a version of it.
Really?
And yeah.
Your trend set. Start making money on that. Good job.
All right, great job doing it.
Thank you so much to our honoraries this month, and thank you to everyone who came to support them. No offense to everyone up here, but this is my favorite part of being on the school board, is seeing all of you guys and seeing the support and seeing your teachers come in, your principals come in, your administrators, and the smiles on your faces, and the pictures, and the pride. That, there's nothing like that, and it's absolutely beautiful. So thank you very much for supporting our students and our educators and our staff for what they do and what they continue to do to make it a great district.
Thank you, everyone, for being here at our recognitions tonight. We're going to go on, we have another recognition, but if you would like to excuse yourself and go on with your evening, you're more than welcome to do so at this time. So George, I'll turn it over to you. January is School Board Recognition Month, so I know you've got some things you put together for our wonderful school board members.
Thank you, Dr. Reiba. As Dr. Reiba stated, January is School Board Appreciation Month, and I have the honor this month, or this year, to kind of lead the recognition, and excited for what we have. So I had a little help from Mr. Faust, Mr. Benson, and then Kaden Hudson, who's out there from the Derby, that's going to help me at the end. So the theme for this year, the Ohio School Boards Association theme for the School Board Appreciation is supporting success for all students. And what we've kind of did was put a little video package together for each board member based on the kind of things that you've impacted throughout the school district. So first, Mrs. Bissell, thank you for your support for all the additional extracurricular activities. Last year, we've implemented new before-and-after-school extracurricular activities outside of the sports at the elementary level. So now every elementary level has at least five different types of before-and-after-school programs. Then also this year, you play a key role in bringing in murals at the middle school. So we have an elementary student from Whitney.
Hello, everybody. My name's Sukun Jom. I'm here at Whitney. I'm in student council and banner, which is really fun. So thank you, Mrs. Bissell, for providing all of these fun activities for every student at Whitney.
Thank you, Michelle. Mrs. Kilbane, under your leadership and expertise, you provided leadership to the Business Advisory Committee, in addition to implementing the extra mile award for students and staff, along with Haley.
We want to thank Mrs. Kilbane for all of her support and opportunities she has brought to Strongsville High School.
We appreciate you for being a member of the Business Advisory Council and supporting our career exploration program.
Mr. Miko, throughout the years you've been on the district, technology has been key for you. Throughout the year, we, throughout the years, I should say, we've upgraded our technology budget, our infrastructure, that allow for one-to-one Chromebooks throughout the, throughout the district over that course of the time. So thank you for your leadership. And we have a middle school student to say thank you.
Technology has really helped improve the lives of all our students and their education. So I would like to thank Mr. Miko for all that he does to improve the tech program and all of the technology options we have here at SMS.
Thank you, Mr. Miko. And then Ms. Stochek, under your leadership, we implemented the WASBO Student Achievement Award with the extra mile award for both recognizing students and staff, as we just saw. And we have a couple preschool students that you might be familiar with.
Haley, we would like to thank you for the extra mile award, the recognition that you're giving, the staff and the students are doing excellent work here at Strongsville, especially here at the preschool with our youngest learners. So all together here, we just want to say.
And Mrs. Hausel, under your leadership, we've added additional opportunities for students in the sports that overlap beginning this year. So thank you. We have a cross-country athlete to say thank you.
On behalf of the student athletes here at Strongsville High School, we want to give a big thank you to Mrs. Hausel for all of the athletic opportunities that she has provided and the support she has given our school.
Thank you, Mrs. Hausel. And then to all board members, thank you for your leadership, your contributions to supporting student success altogether.
Thank you, Strongsville Board of Education.
Thank you, Strongsville Board of Education. Thank you, Strongsville Board of Education. Thank you, Strongsville Board of Education.
And then lastly, we do have some small token of appreciation that was made possible by the Derby. I do have Kaden Hudson here who works at the Derby. He's outgoing. When I first went in there, he's trying to get you to buy things. So I think he also contributed to the gifts that were, helped make the gifts that were about to pass out. So before we do, Kaden, why don't you meet me at the podium, kind of introduce yourself? So Kaden, over here.
I am a freshman in high school.
What do you like most about the Derby?
Well, it helps you learn new skills of helping children in school, and helps you like, help you like new shirts and for schools to be able to buy shirts.
Yeah, why do they have that? It looks like when I'm there, it looks like you're having fun. The past couple of times I've seen you here, you're dealing with it. You're hustling. Also, what I found out too is Hudson's involved with unified sports. And what's your favorite part of that?
Well, it's, it's very fun. We get to do like a lot of like different like, like football, basketball, soccer thing. It's very fun, and we get to get out of the school all the time. Basketball is my number one sport. It's the one I'm actually very good at.
Yeah, what position, buddy?
I don't know.
You just stopped playing? That's fun. All right, so you want to hold the passes up? Within the bags, there's also a thank you notes from classmates of Cadence from the Derby, as well as notes from Mr. Jenkhar's speech and communication class as well. So go ahead, open them up.
They're so soft. I love that.
Thank you very, very much. It's very much appreciated.
Look at the sleeve. What's that?
Not to be sold at the Derby.
I can wear golf things, too.
There you go.
There you go. Yes.
Thank you.
Kaden, if you could let everybody at the Derby know how much we appreciate it, and thank you so much for taking time out of your night to come and see us. Thank you.
Thank you, Kaden. And thank you to his mom for bringing him as well. She's eight at the high school.
Thank you.
All right. With that, we will continue on with our agenda. Next up, we have public comment. We have two slips. If you could approach the podium, state your name and your address, and you have three minutes to address the board. First up is Ken Mahalco and John McDermott.
Hi, I'm John McDermott. I am president of the Strongsville Community Band Board of Trustees. I'm here with our director, Ken Mahalco. My address is 18380 Worthington Park Drive. And we, we had been wanting to come and address the board for quite a while and hadn't gotten around to it, but being that this month is Board Appreciation Month, I think our timing was just right. We're, we're here to say thank you to Dr. Reiba and the entire board for all the support that you've shown us over the past few years. When, when the center of town started expanding and things were being built there, and it pretty much took away all the parking, and all of our outdoor concerts had always been held on the commons. And the band is going into their 34th year this year. So a few years ago, we had to find another outdoor venue. Dr. Reiba was kind enough and gracious enough to allow us to, to hold our band concerts in front of the middle school. And then when, when band chairs for the band members became an issue, then we were able to use folding chairs from the middle school as well. So on behalf of the entire Strongsville Community Band, our Board of Trustees, we just want to say how grateful and thankful we are to all of you. So thank you, and I believe Ken has something.
Yeah, I'm Ken Mahalco. I was the band director here from 1961 to 1990, and then they got the community band going after that. God, it's 82 years ago. But I've been active, obviously, in music in this community. Two of my kids graduated from Strongsville. Two of my grandkids graduated from Strongsville, and by the way, are doing real well. Two of my grandkids graduated from Strongsville and by the way are doing real well. And um so I've seen a lot of action in the community, education. It's been great. It just, it kind of spurred me now, being here now and seeing all the awards, because I thought, wow, nothing has changed. We still have great kids in this community, not yet, and they were when I was there too. And um I would like to say, I've seen many superintendents and I think Dr. Reiba is one of the best that I've seen in this community over this past eighty-two years for me. And I think you should be happy with his leadership. And again, thank you guys so much. We really appreciate it. And we have, you were the ones that actually helped us start it when we did the city, the Board of Education, and we used the high school instruments and music to get going. And thirty-four years later, we're still doing it. And again, thank you so much.
Next, we have Beverly Jones.
It's a great night, a great school district, a wonderful board. Good evening. My name is Beverly Jones. I'm one-five-one-three-four Camden Circle, Strongsville. And I just want to say um thank you for letting me talk to you a little bit tonight. I got a question. Have you ever, now this is for the little ones, the 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 young ones. Have you ever told a little child something and they interpreted it so literally that you said, oh, my gosh, that's what they meant. Oh, that's what they thought I meant. I know it's happened to me uh when my, when mine were were very little. I lost a lot of glassware saying, go throw this in the sink, you know? So you know what I mean, okay? Anyway, um I've been talking to, you know, moms and dads and and a couple of them wanted me to come and say this tonight. But I want to say it on behalf of our parents of little guys. Uh, okay, and um some of them are concerned with some of the assignments uh that are over the heads of their young ones, especially grade four and below. And uh some of the students are confused over some of the content. Some are afraid after some of the classroom discussions and some even are missing sleep at night. Those are things that aren't going to be discussed in classrooms, but they're discussed among the the families. So I thought I'd address it on their behalf tonight. One example, there was an aside, and this is by no means against any teacher or any assignment in the classroom, but I just had to pull out an example for you. There was one example where um some of the discussion uh was about pain, depression, uh bullets flying, uh, okay? And it was two eight-year-olds and they were having this discussion. And at this age, you know, children can't always process this type of drama appropriately to describe it or let alone to solve it. Even though, sad to say, such children and families do experience these kind of dramatic experiences. Do we ignore that it happens? No, we have to approach it, okay? And we have to find a way, though, because young children need to approach important issues of life in a way they can understand, okay? By the way, remember Nursery Rhymes and Mother Goose and Walt Disney and Dr. Seuss? They approached some deep issues that occur in children's lives, but they did it on a, on a, according to child development, so the children could understand uh how to solve these problems. And so we could teach critical thinking and problem solving to the children uh on their level, okay? Now, we know that every teacher in courses of their training taught developmental stages of life, particularly the levels of understanding when children are emotionally and cognitively ready to evaluate and apply content. Okay, here at Strongsville, our faculty, staff and administration are excellent. I wish I could think of a better word, but you're excellent, okay? The teachers stress those skills that are needed to navigate in life, okay? And I'm not complaining. I'm just suggesting that as our principals of each school look at the weekly lesson plans, and I assume they do, I hope they do, please remind them to see that the content would be presented to the children according to their developmental stages and age appropriateness, okay? So, because if we try to teach them in areas they're not ready for, we haven't taught them anything at all. Thank you very much.
Next on the agenda is approval of minutes. Motion to approve regular Board of Education meeting minutes from November twenty-second, twenty-twenty-two, December eighth, twenty-twenty-two, and January fifth, twenty-twenty-three. All district video and audio recordings will be a permanent part of the minutes. And with that, I will turn it over to Mr. Exnasty for the financials.
Thank you, Mrs. Hausum. I have a few updates for your consideration tonight. Uh the first being the monthly financial report for um this, for the month end in December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-two. It can be accessed public here and then it'll also be posted to the website. I will go over the supplemental report, which compares um year-to-date activity compared to last year and then also um against how it's trending against the forecast. So overall, through December thirty-first, uh compared to five-year forecast, revenues are trending seven-hundred-twenty-two thousand over forecasted. Um and there's three primary reasons for this. In December, we reached, um our attorney David Seed reached um three out-of-court settlement or out of um board revision settlement agreements for property uh valuations with three businesses totaling um three-hundred-sixty-two thousand dollars for the year. Uh we received um about two-hundred-forty-five thousand dollars at revenue in December and then we'll receive a portion uh in this March and then uh the remaining in March of twenty-twenty-four. So the amounts in December and this March will be this fiscal year and then next March will be the next fiscal year. So the time of the forecasts, those were not known. And then also um in the state foundation, uh transportation, the allocation for transportation increased by two-hundred-fifty-eight thousand um for that line. So that 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 um was released in December. And then also interest income is um forecasting over the budget. Right now, we're seventy thousand dollars over and that'll continue to increase as interest rates are increasing. So I think last I've seen for Star Ohio, the interest rate is a little over four and a half, four and a half percent. So it's been trending up every week and as that continues to trend, that line is going to be over. So continue to report on it on a monthly basis. And then expenditures are trending one-hundred-sixty-six thousand under, under the forecast or point-two percent. And a portion of that is three-hundred-sixteen thousand due to combination salary and benefit savings, due to open positions, F L A, F L A leaves. And then also we had our workers' compensation annual premium paid in December and that was ninety-one thousand dollars under budget. So we had a savings there. Um purchase service is trending one-hundred-sixty thousand over due to um an additional um student placed out into a, and into an out-of-placement that that was approved last month. We've also moved um about eighty thousand dollars from uh material supplies for textbooks to um our Ed Options Academy for additional credits and then utilities are trending a little higher. And that line will continue to fluctuate either positive or negative, so we'll look at that each month as well. Kind of get in to the, so both those two combined, um if they play out, we still have six more months to go. Um it's resulting a positive impact of eight-hundred-eighty-nine thousand dollars to the forecast. Revenue collections compared to um last December to this December is a hundred and a hundred and um eight-hundred-four thousand dollars more. Um state revenue makes up about two-hundred-fifty-eight thousand there for the transportation. And then also um common, you know, other revenue, a combination of the interest in the out-of-court settlements. And then overall, um fiscal year-to-date collections um in revenue from July, December of last year to this December, uh it's about two-point-one million dollars or five-point-two percent higher. The largest difference is uh tax collections are coming in about nine-hundred-thousand dollars higher compared to the previous year. And then also um state aid is about seven-hundred-twenty-thousand dollars higher. And that was due to the timing of when they implemented the state, the fair funding formula, which um kicked in in January of last year. Compared to the forecast, as I mentioned, it's trending about seven-hundred-twenty-two thousand dollars higher. And kind of touched on the 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 areas where it's increasing in the revenue, lieu of taxes, the train, the state aid and investment earnings were the um biggest amount. And this increase is about point-eight-three percent of difference in the annual forecast. We have six months to go. We'll continue to report out every month on how we're trending. Expenditures uh compared to last December to this December were uh two-hundred-fifty-nine thou, two-hundred-fifty-nine thousand dollars higher. Um that is made up of two-hundred-and-eighty-eight thousand in salary and benefits um is the uh the biggest factor. And then year-to-date, um we're about two-point-eight million dollars um higher in um year-to-date compared to last year. And um the biggest contributor is salary and benefits. It's one-point-six million dollars higher compared to last year. And then all other expenses is um due to other categories based on the timing of of when the expenditures hit and also utilities are slightly higher compared to last year as well. And how it's trending, the forecast, as mentioned earlier, about one-hundred-sixty-six thousand dollars under the forecast or point-two percent. So continue to monitor, report out every month. And then again, the forecast is updated, will be updated in May. And that concludes the financial report. If there's any questions? Not hearing any. We have one grant approval. It's from the Strongsville Education Foundation. Uh this came in early December, but since this is our first regular board meeting since then, um it is for one-thousand-two-hundred dollars for playground stencils for Chapman Elementary. And then lastly, um we have an annual appropriation adjustment, adjustments to the annual appropriation based on the like the SCF grant. And then there was also a reallocation in some of our federal funds that make up the difference and changes. And then the last thing to report out, although it's not on the agenda, uh prior to this meeting, we had our post audit with the State Auditor's Office. Um the audit was conducted for the fiscal year that just ended, FY twenty-two, which ended June thirtieth. Um typically, the auditors come in in August and from August to December, do a, do a fiscal audit and a compliance audit on the district. And the audit report is released by the end of December. Overall, Strongsville had a clean audit, no, an unmodified opinion, uh no, no, no findings or no comments. So um we should qualify for the auditor's award again with distinction because we do a comprehensive annual financial report and didn't have any uh findings. So still waiting to hear confirmation on that, but it, we qualify for it. So if we do get it, this will be the fourth year in a row. And that report can be found on the district's website under Treasurers, Treasurers Department, um annual reports for under the school year. So with that, that concludes my report.
Alright, thank you, George, and congratulations on that. And please extend that to your team. I know how hard you guys work for this, so.
And I would say, it's just not my team. It's a complete district effort. It's a team effort by the district. If um everyone plays a role in it, so thank you to everybody.
Thank you, Mrs. Hausum. Uh the first item we have is just a routine item. It's a contract with the Educational Service Center of Northeast Ohio. So basically what this is, is uh there's six dollars and fifty cents per student that's deducted from our state foundation. It's given to the ESC. Ninety percent of that comes back uh to the school district. And there's a series of ways that we could use those dollars. Uh for us, we use it to uh support additional staff that we contract through the ESC. So audiologists, sign language interpreters, uh some other staff, that's how we use it. Uh but every few years, we have to update the contract, so that's what this is. So be resolved upon my recommendation that we enter into a two-year agreement with the Educational Service Center of Northeast Ohio um for the services listed in exhibit that will go for twenty-three, twenty-four and twenty-four, twenty-five um and begin July first of twenty-three and end July thirtieth of twenty-five. Any questions on that item? Uh the second is a discussion item. And George, if you would put the uh false supplements on the board for me, thank you. Uh so this is, this uh ends the cycle of discussions we've had about uh looking at our athletic supplemental contracts and opportunities and ensuring that we have the support for our student athletes uh and and students in terms of experiences um that is necessary to provide the coaching so that we can have a premier athletic program, just like we strive for our arts and academics as well. Uh so what you have in front of you, uh this is what I'm recommending as the additional uh supplemental contracts that will be put into place for fall of twenty-twenty-three. Uh Jenny, in the next month or so, will start posting for those jobs. Um and so as before, uh there's nothing to vote on tonight. I'm just looking for consensus or questions or dialogue about these. Um and the board would officially approve these by way of the coaches being recommended uh in the next couple of months uh before the end of this school year. So uh a- as it's listed there, the top uh top three rows are for the high school. Uh we are recommending uh to get us to the level uh of what we would like to be at for coaching at the high school that we would have. Uh we would increase one supplemental contract for football. Uh they previously had that. That was reduced in two thousand eighteen when we were making some level-one reductions because of the failure of a levy. Uh this coach would be utilized to allow an additional coach to help support our freshman uh football team. Uh volleyball, this would go, what we've talked about numerous times, having a varsity assistant. Uh those were reviewed, reduced years ago. Uh this would add a varsity assistant to our uh high school volleyball program. Um and cur, currently, this uh tennis, this is for uh girls tennis in the fall. Um and and we've seen great growth. Coach Black has done a great job of growing that program. Uh so right now, we have a a head coach, um an assistant coach and a part-time, a half-contract assistant coach. So this will make that third assistant coach a full-time coach. And what it will allow is us to have a a second, uh an additional team. There's enough girls to support an additional team. So right now, we have a a varsity and a JV. Uh that would allow him to go to a a varsity and a, and a varsity B and a JV team or a varsity and a JVA, JVB team uh to allow, uh in tennis, there's only so many courts, so we need to be in different locations. So that would allow us actually to uh have more of our girls competing um and increase opportunities. So that's high school. Uh for the uh middle school, we're recommending uh, first of all, reinstating a a previously reduced position of eighth-grade volleyball. That would bring us back to like you approved for basketball, two eighth-grade uh teams um for volleyball in the fall at middle school. Uh we started a cheerleading program this winter that you approved. That would continue it for uh the fall for football. So that would be one team, one coach, one team for seventh-grade football. Uh one team, one coach for uh eighth-grade football uh as well. Um so that would be a a new opportunity for our kids in terms of cheerleading at the middle school. And that would include both fall, uh if you approve, uh and then winter, which is already in place. And uh our intermural program is off to a great success at the middle school. Uh they've, they've had bowling. Uh they're getting ready for session two of bowling, uh which I think they have close to fifty students. Uh and then they'll go into three-on-three basketball. So in total, we met the other day, I'm looking at Jenny because she's usually at the meetings, but she wasn't this time. Uh but we've impacted about two-hundred-and-fifty middle schoolers just in winter uh that got involved in intermurals and that's just phenomenal. Um we've got spring, they're finalizing the plans for spring based on student interest, so this would create a fall option. So what Mr. Kepler uh does, our assistant athletic director who oversees this, he surveys the kids, see what they're interested in, and then he makes it happen uh based on the the space and availability. Uh so it's, it's been a great start. Uh and this would make intermural program all throughout the entire uh school year. So all told, that would be an additional expense um for a fall of next year uh of of thirty-one thousand, thirty-one hundred and thirty-three dollars. That's actually in this year's dollars. Um so we don't have a, you know, the teacher's contract expires at the end of this year. Uh supplementals are based on uh the base salary. So uh we know it will be at minimum that um and maybe a little increased based on uh where that may go. Uh but uh but that's around the ballpark for the cost. So open it up, Ms. Hausum, for discussion. If there's any questions. So open it up, Ms. Hausum, for discussion if there's any questions. And again, the look is, the desire is to see if there's consensus on these additional supplementals and then Jenny will post accordingly.
Any questions or comments?
I have a couple of questions. I just want to make sure I understand with the volleyball, we already have a full-time JV coach. This is just to also support the varsity team.
Yeah, so this will add a fourth coach. So we have a freshman JV and varsity. This would add a varsity assistant coach.
Okay, thank you. And then so similarly with the freshman football coach that we'd be adding, who handles that now?
I believe, and I believe we have two coaches there. We would, this would be adding a third coach and that would make it even with what we do at the middle school. Our seventh and eighth grade teams both have three coaches. So this would add a third coach and would look at seventh, eighth and ninth would all have three and then JV and varsity would have higher numbers there.
Okay. And the last question, we've obviously had success with the middle school intermurals. Is one advisor enough to support the demand?
So far, they've done a nice job of mapping it out and right now it is. If we see, you know, I think what we'll see is with any program, word gets out, kids enjoy it, it could expand. We actually have two advisors that are splitting in winter the supplemental contract. And so it's worked out for their schedules and being able to make it work. And Jason's made sure that it's equitable in terms of what we expect of other club advisors. But, you know, I've told Jason that, hey, if we get to a point where we need to look at, is interest expanding? Right now, he's able to meet the demand of student interest. We've not had to turn kids away at this point, but if we do, we'll bring it back to the board for your consideration.
Thank you.
Any others?
Okay, so thank you. We'll bring it back in the coming months and as Jenny posts for those positions. So on behalf of our athletic department and our principals in terms of student engagement, thank you for supporting our programs. It really is making a meaningful impact, so we appreciate that. Moving on from my report or my items, I'm going to turn it over to our operations manager, Steve Brechner, with a few items under his agenda for the month. Steve?
Good evening, everyone. The first item in this section is a resolution from the Ohio Schools Council Governance Policy. Be resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent that the Board of Education approves a resolution authorizing Ohio Schools Council Governance Policy Change as stated in the exhibit.
This requires a motion?
Yeah.
All right. We need a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Bissell, second by Ms. Stovcek. Any discussion? Hearing none. George, can you take the roll?
Ms. Bissell?
Yes.
Ms. Stovcek?
Yes.
Ms. Cobain?
Yes.
Ms. Miko?
Yes.
Ms. Hausum?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right. The second item is a revision involving the bus bid awards. Be resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent that the following revision be made. Revision to Agenda December 8th, 2022, the superintendent's report slash business services, the three bus bid awards from the Permanent Improvement Fund. Revision to increase the bid for two conventionally unitized complete unit buses for an additional price not to exceed $1,912 and no sense for Myers Bus Sales and Services.
This also requires a motion? Have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Motion by Ms. Cobain, second by Ms. Stovcek. Any discussion?
Steve, can you explain to us the increase?
Yeah, so by the, from the time that the bus bids were awarded from the Ohio Schools Council to Thomas buses deciding on the structure, the finalized structure, there's a little gap in time. What they've chosen to do, instead of making LED lights an option throughout the entire bus and the electrical structure, it is now the standard. So this is just going to be incorporated from here on out. It was just the timing that between the bus bid and Thomas deciding the structure that they were going to go with. So it increased the buses in that total and that's for both buses combined. Hereforward, that'll just be a standard. When we do the bus bids, it won't have to come back for that specific revision. I cannot promise this will not happen again, but they've chosen to go with LEDs and that should be the standard for quite a while.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments?
Are they going to warranty the LEDs?
Yes. Yeah, it'll be part of the comprehensive package that we, that the board approved the last meeting.
I don't know how many times I've bought an LED light bulbs and it's supposed to last 5,000 years and six months later, I'm buying another one.
You need to see my vendors. They do a great job.
We'll take that offline.
All right. Hearing no more questions. George?
Ms. Cobain?
Yes.
Ms. Stovcek?
Yes.
Mrs. Bissell?
Yes.
Ms. Miko?
Yes.
Mrs. Hausum?
Yes.
The motion carries.
The third item is a resolution for the school resource officers and a revision. Be resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent that the following revision be made. Revision to Agenda July 14th, 2022, the superintendent's report. Strongsville Police Department, revision to increase the monthly reimbursement for school resource officers at Strongsville Middle School and Strongsville High School based on the negotiated contract with the City of Strongsville for an additional rate increase total of $2,195.84. The fourth item on the agenda is an addendum with the Southwest General Health Center Services Agreement. Be resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent that the following addendum be approved. Addendum to Agenda May 19th, 2016. The addendum is to change the remaining four years of yearly lump sum payments to hourly wages due to staffing shortages and the hourly rates are as follows. In '22, '23, it's $21.63 an hour. Year '23, '24, it's $22.38 an hour. '24, '25, $23.17 an hour. And '25, '26, $23.98 an hour.
Any questions for Steve?
This one's a vote.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Bissell, second by Ms. Stovcek. Any questions or discussion? Steve, do you want to explain why we're going from a salary to hourly?
Because they haven't been able to fulfill the salary at the hours that were in the original agreement. So to be fair and also to get the best bang for the buck, so to speak, we're going to change the nature of the agreement from a lump sum to an hourly so that they can still fill those and we would pay as we can, but they're just not able to meet the hours that were in the original agreement.
Any other questions or discussion? All right, George, take the roll.
Mrs. Bissell?
Yes.
Ms. Stovcek?
Yes.
Ms. Cobain?
Yes.
Ms. Miko?
Yes.
Mrs. Hausum?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you, Steve.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Erin Green, our Director of Curriculum, with the curriculum report for the month. Erin?
Thank you. I do just want to start by echoing the gratitude of earlier for our board members. Appreciate the support that you always show us for curriculum as well as other items. So thank you. Tonight, I have 10 items for you. First two are student-teacher affiliation agreements. So item one is an affiliation agreement with Mercyhurst University. Be it resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent that the affiliation agreement between Mercyhurst University and Strongsville City Schools be approved as presented in the attachment. The second item is an affiliation agreement with Grand Canyon University. Be it resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the affiliation agreement between Grand Canyon University and Strongsville be approved as presented. Third item is an overnight trip for our Strongsville High School varsity gymnastics team. Be it resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the permission be granted to the Strongsville varsity gymnastics team to travel to Cincinnati, Ohio to participate in the Win the Day Invitational. This will be held February 4th and 5th of 2023. Transportation via school bus and expenses paid with gymnastics booster funds. Item four, we have another overnight trip, this one for Strongsville High School men's golf team. Be it resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the permission be granted to the Strongsville men's golf team to travel to Meadville, Pennsylvania to participate in the Midwest Prep Golf Classic September 15th through 17th of 2023. Transportation via district van and parents' vehicles, expenses paid with proceeds from fundraising. Item five, an overnight trip for the Strongsville High School dance team. This is exciting. We want to congratulate the dance team. Be it resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the permission be granted to the Strongsville High School dance team to travel to Westerville, Ohio to participate in the state championship, January 27th and 28th, '23, so this upcoming weekend. Transportation will be via parents' vehicles, expenses will be paid by participating students. So we know they will represent us well. Item six is Strongsville High School Marketing Education Students, DECA, a trip to Japan for them. Be it resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the permission be granted to the Strongsville High School Marketing Education teacher, Jenna Namick, to travel with the marketing education students to Japan. This will take place June 5th through 15th of 2024. Expenses will be paid by the participating students and as always, if necessary, the trip may be postponed or destination changed depending on world events at the time. Item seven, we have some student-teacher placements. We have two. First one, be it resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the following teachers be placed, first one at Strongsville Middle School and Strongsville High School to science teachers and those dates are January 27th through May 4th. The second student will be placed at Strongsville Early Learning Preschool, January 27th through March 31st. Neglected to say, the first one is a student at Mercyhurst University, the second one a student at Grand Canyon University. Item eight, student-teacher observation field experiences. Be resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the following students shall be placed for the purpose of observation field experience. We have one student at Whitney Elementary, February 8th through April 28th, a Baldwin Wallace student. Another student going to Chapman Elementary, assigned from February 8th through April 28th, a Baldwin Wallace University student as well. And our last Baldwin Wallace University music student going to Strongsville Middle School from February 8th to April 28th, 2023. And again, those are all Baldwin Wallace University music students. And one revision here, item nine, student-teacher field experience revision. So this is a revision from the November 22nd, 2022 agenda. We have a host teacher change as well as the beginning date. So it is changed from January 16th, 2023 to January 27th, 2023. And the last item tonight for your consideration is the Strongsville High School Program of Studies. Be it resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent that the Strongsville High School Program of Studies for the '23, '24 school year be approved. And I had just a few items of interest to highlight with our new program of studies. Students will start scheduling as early as next Friday at the high school level. Couple of courses that are new, we have a yearbook course. You may remember this current year was the first time we moved it from an extracurricular to a course with print journalism. We're now making it an all-year course. We've had great success with that class. We have an investing course. This will cover key skills like financial planning, investments, retirement, taxation, all of those good things. Makerspace two, so an advanced Makerspace. Again, Joan Battle at the high school has done such a nice job with Makerspace one that there's an interest and a need to expand to Makerspace two. And we have a music and literature course, which is going to focus with English language arts and incorporate some of the music components that can be embedded. Last thing to talk about is an adjustment or an update that we are going to require students to be enrolled in six classes per semester. It was five and a half. However, most of our kids take six or more classes, just a slight update. If there, we have seniors or upperclassmen in good academic standing, that requirement may be waived with advanced administrative approval. But this will keep kids from having multiple study halls within a day. It'll help us with scheduling with courses, second semester, that sometimes get dropped because kids have their five and a half credits as it stands now. Questions on any of that?
Erin, just to, just to be clear for everyone. We're not changing the number of credit hours to graduate. That's remaining at 22. It's just how many classes in the eight-period day or how, you know, how many classes you actually have to schedule for. So, and you did the math, right? Or you went through and it's, it's not going to be a significant change for a huge percentage of our kids.
Correct.
Just a small percentage are taking multiple study halls and that's not beneficial.
So can we just monitor it and report back a year from now?
Sure.
On lessons learned, what the consequences were, if any, and what the successes were?
Definitely. We did run all of the numbers before making this decision to see, you know, what we were looking at with kids-wise, sitting in study halls and how that affected us. Thank you.
Thanks, Erin. Next, we do have one item under Student Services, so Andy?
Good evening, members of the board. The one item today is PSI affiliates. Be it resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent that the Board of Education enters into an amended Attachment A and Addendum D with PSI affiliates for nursing and health services, as shown in the exhibit. This is an amendment to Agenda item in July 12th of 2021. Do you have any questions?
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Andy. Next, our Assistant Superintendent Jenny Pelco with the Human Resource Report. Jenny?
Thank you. I have the following items for your consideration this evening. Number one, we have the abolishment of a non-certificated staff position. Item two, we have the resignation for a certificated district substitute. Item three, we have the resignation for a non-certified staff member. Item four, we have two certificated retirements. Again, we'll celebrate all of our retirees this year in May, but the letters are starting to come in a little early. Item five, an additional retirement for one of our leadership team members. Item six, retirement for a non-certificated staff member. Item seven, we have appointments for certificated staff members. Item eight, appointments for non-certificated staff members. Item nine, appointments for certificated athletic supplemental contracts. Item 10, appointments for non-certificated athletic supplemental contracts. Item 11, appointments for a certificated district substitute. Item 12, appointments for certificated substitutes. 13, appointments for non-certificated substitutes. Item 14, changes in hours for non-certificated staff members. Item 15, changes in status for a non-certificated staff, one non-certificated staff member there. Item 16, we have our stipends for our auditorium stage crew. Item 17, certificated medical leaves. Item 18, non-certificated medical leaves. Item 19, certificated unpaid leaves. 20, non-certificated unpaid leave. And finally, under item 21, we have our volunteer coaches. And that concludes my report.
We do not have any items under technology for this month, so with that, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Dr. Iba. Next up, we'll go on to our committee reports. Report on Polaris Career Center. Michelle?
Thank you. Polaris had its organizational meeting earlier in January, so we are getting things rolling for this new year. Happy to report that the programs for the high school students are filling very quickly and we have a number of applications from Strongsville, so that's exciting. Just a reminder to parents, if your student is still interested in Polaris programming, now is the time because those programs are filling. I want to give a shout out to a Polaris ambassador, to Hannah Odatala. She was highlighted this week on Polaris's social media. And I'm noticing here her favorite movie is Divergent. I just had the pleasure of watching that. I just had the pleasure of watching that with my family, and we really enjoyed it, too. So, congratulations and thank you to Hannah for representing both Strongsville and Polaris well. I know we've mentioned her more than once, so she's doing excellent work there. She's a pre-nursing student. And finally, in February, we don't have a traditional meeting. Last year, we started something new where each board member meets with the superintendent at Polaris, Bob Timmons, and their home superintendent. So, Dr. Reiba and I will meet with Bob sometime in February, and that has allowed us to, like, really solidify our relationship and make sure Polaris and Strongsville are supporting one another in every way that we can. So, I'm looking forward to doing that again this year. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Next up, legislation.
Thank you. Just a couple of updates for the community to be aware of. On January 6th, Governor DeWine signed House Bill 458, and that one is the, the voting updates. So, starting with the next primary election, you will have to present an unexpired photo ID to vote. In addition, on January 8th, the governor signed a ban of TikTok on all state communication devices. So, it might be something for our policy committee to start talking about whether it comes down as a directive or whether we need to be proactive. It is something we probably should talk about. And then, on Tuesday, January 31st, the governor will give his State of the State address. He is going to focus on the budget priorities and summarize his budget priorities for the next two years. And then, he will highlight those priorities and then most likely release the two-year budget shortly thereafter. And if you're in any, any of those businesses like education, we'll all be watching on Tuesday and looking forward or wanting to get our hands on the budget and see what that means for Strongsville. But the, the governor has talked about how he, he sees education as the primary and most important part of the budget that's coming forward, and talked about some of the things at the college level that he's hoping to accomplish as far as increasing scholarships for students in Ohio and other adult ed programs. But hopefully, that philosophy also is part, is reflected in the elementary school funding. So, we'll look forward to that. And then, in legislation news, on, the Senate has taken up Senate Bill 1, which is again attempting to revamp the State Board of Education. And in the, in the bill as it stands now, the Board of Education would become a department of the governor and would have a director assigned to it. And the current State Board of Education, their responsibilities would be diminished, I guess is a polite way to put it. So, we'll continue to monitor all of those because they will affect us in Strongsville. And that completes my report.
Thanks, Rich. Next, Board Liaison Reports. City Council.
City Council met last week, and it was a exciting meeting to behold. I do want to give a shout out to Mr. Clark. The same way that Laura and I have maintained our liaison to the City Council, Mr. Clark fought hard to maintain his liaison to the school board, and I know we're excited to continue that, that relationship and that partnership with the city. I did enjoy the fact that at the last meeting, they did update their finance, their budget, and they voted on that budget. And what was, what was interesting was the similarity. They have some of the same challenges we have where you have to wait for the information to come in, and in this case, it was end-of-the-year information. And so, there was $14 million that was added to the budget, but when you get into the details, it's $14 million that is a carryover from last year. But just like it's important to the school board that we, we watch every penny because every penny counts, I think that same attitude exists at the city. And then, my last, my last shout out is if anyone sees Jim Carbone in the community, congratulate him because he was unanimously appointed the trustee for the Strongsville Community Improvement Corporation. So, make sure to extend his congratulations because I know he fought very hard for that honor. And that completes my report.
Thank you. Next, we have Strongsville Education Foundation.
Yes, the Strongsville Foundation education people meet every second Thursday of the month at 7:30 a.m. if anyone's ever interested. It was my first meeting. They had a fundraiser at Master Pizza, and according to everyone, that went really well. They also have $8,000 in grant money. Now, I don't know if they still have it. This was a week ago. And they're asking if anyone is in need of anything to contact. One of them in the foundation, they're looking to give their money away, so why not look? That's a good thing. And our next meeting is on February 9th, again, at 7:30. It's here, right? Yes. Couldn't remember where I was, but I was here. And that concludes my report for them. Then you want me to go on to? Okay. So, then, PTA had a busy time because it's the beginning. A couple of notes. Founder's Day Celebration is Tuesday, February 21st at 7:00 p.m. at the middle school. So, there'll be no meeting of the PTA for February. Congratulations to Maggie Coza, Council PA, Ohio Achievement Award recipient, who's here tonight. Congratulations. Also, the PTA did something, it's called Reflections, and it was really a nice thing. I went. It was on January 7th at the Strongsville Library. Katie Drake, thank you to her. She organized it. The kids send in submissions into Columbus, and then they get picked and they bring them back here. And it really was like wonderful. She had cookies, balloons. There were families there looking at their kids' things, and I thought it was amazing because kids sent in films. And they also did, some were composing songs. So, it, you know, thank you to Katie for undertaking this because I think it was really a success. And next year, look for it because if you get a chance, you wouldn't believe how creative some of these kids can be. So, that was great. And up until last year, the council now has granted $10,000 in their grants. And thank you to Vicky Maloney and Becky Jones for chairing that committee. Also, the PTA is hosting at the Strongsville Middle School. It's called the Mardi Gras Color Party. That's scheduled for February 24th. You can get online tickets, which started on January 11th. This year, though, to get the message out, you can also buy tickets at school. Check with your school, but they have it tentatively January 27th, February 16th, and February 21st. So, just recheck those dates, but you can buy your tickets at school. They're also looking for anyone interested in being on the council board. That would be president, vice president, and recording secretary. If you know of anyone, someone interested, get ahold of Kelly Presseran. And, let me see. Looking for volunteers to read senior essays and choose recipients for the PBIS scholarships. And you need to contact Cinnamon, I think I'm saying her name right, Safani. So, if anyone is interested in helping read those, that would be great. And that concludes my report.
Thanks, Sharon. Next, Board Committee Reports. Finance Committee?
We have no report. We haven't met yet this year. George?
Yeah, I was waiting for a couple special meetings to be finalized, so now those are out of the pool of a committee on a date we can get back together to move the work that we were doing forward, so hopefully we have a meeting soon.
Great. Policy Committee?
We have third reading of our policies tonight, and we usually schedule another meeting in the spring, so we're waiting on that.
Facilities Committee?
We met last week on February 16th, and we met at Whitney Elementary and reviewed the state of affairs at Whitney Elementary. And then, we returned to the old Zeller's Building, this building, but I think it's apropos that we discussed it as the old Zeller's Building because we evaluated it as a potential elementary building. And that completes for the Facilities Development Committee their on-hand, in-person review of all of our elementary buildings. They'll be coming to our next work session to discuss the state or status of our elementary buildings and some of their ideas and recommendations. And there, our next meeting of the Facilities Development Committee is March 16th at 6:30 p.m. And since we're done traveling, it will be back here in the admin building.
Thanks, Rich. Business Advisory Council Committee? Our next meeting is Fri-, or yeah, Friday, February 17th at 7:30 a.m. here. Great. All right, that brings us to the adoption of the consent calendar. Action by the Board of Education in adoption of consent calendar at this point in the agenda means that all items appearing in this agenda denoted as type slash action consent, which items constitute the consent calendar, are adopted by one single motion unless a member of the board or superintendent requests that such items be removed from the consent calendar and voted upon separately. Is there anything that needs to be pulled and voted on separately? Hearing none, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Motion by Ms. Kilbane, second by Ms. Stavcek. Any discussion? George?
Ms. Kilbane?
Yes.
Ms. Stavcek?
Yes.
Ms. Bissel?
Yes.
Mr. Miko?
Yes.
Ms. Housel?
Yes. Motion carries. Dr. Reiba, your superintendent's timely information.
Thank you. George finalizes his clicks over there. He'll put the slide up on the board. So, coming up next week and the week after, parent-teacher conferences, our, our final round of parent-teacher conferences are there, so please be on the lookout for parents that would like to meet with their child's teacher. You can reach out to the school, but your principal's newsletter will have more specific details how to sign up. So, we always encourage our parents to, to reach out and engage and be an active participant as our students are best served when we work together for their well-being. So, check out the dates and times there and your principal's newsletter, and we look forward to meeting with many of our parents in the coming weeks. For our high school students, and this also includes middle school students, College Credit Plus, annually, we have a parent informational meeting for getting, for those students that are interested in College Credit Plus for next year. So, this would be sixth graders on up. It's eligible for students in seventh grade, so if you're a sixth grader on up and you are interested. Wednesday, February 1st at 6:00 p.m., there's going to be a virtual meeting, and the, the link will be on the high school page closer to that time period. Not in this slide, but just a reminder, this is an informational meeting. There's criteria that you need to meet to be able to take College Credit Plus classes as well as an intent to participate form that's usually due around April 1st, but that is a non-negotiable date for, for our families for the school district to pay for College Credit Plus. So, families need to pay attention to this meeting and those dates. If families miss the date, their children, that April 1st deadline date around that ballpark, students can still participate, but parents would have to pay the cost of that college tuition.
That, that meeting will be recorded and also posted on the website after?
Correct, yes. It will be available for anybody that can make that February 1st date.
Thank you.
And then, annually, in, in, this year, it's going to be March 1st. I present the state of the schools, so that's open. We will livestream that as well, but it will be on Wednesday, March 1st, 6:00 p.m. at Strongsville Middle School Auditorium. And so, we invite everybody to come and hear about the work that we're doing as, as a district, as a preview. We're going to talk about how, we're going to talk about our finances and how we're investing back in our students in our school district. We're going to talk about facilities and where we're going as a district with our facility plan. And finally, our focus moving forward, we are finishing up our three-year strategic plan, and we will give a preview of what's in store for the, the future focus of the district based on the stakeholder feedback. So, should be, for those of, of our families that are heavily involved or want to be heavily involved, should be an informative night. So, invite everybody to tune in to the livestreamed event or come see us in person at the middle school. And with that, that concludes the timely information.
Great, thank you. Next on the agenda is Board Bylaws and Policies. We do have our third and final reading tonight of Board Bylaws and Policies. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Motion by Ms. Kilbane, second by Mrs. Stavcek. Any discussion, any questions for Haley or Michelle or Dr. Reiba? All right, hearing none. George?
Who made the motion in the?
Sharon made the motion. Haley made the second.
Ms. Kilbane?
Yes.
Ms. Stavcek?
Yes.
Ms. Bissel?
Yes.
Mr. Miko?
Yes.
Ms. Housel?
Yes. Motion carries.
Board of Education, other? Do we have any other information? Nobody? I just wanted to mention, and Tom, maybe you can help me, the wrestling club is having a fundraiser this Saturday.
Five to 8:00 p.m. at Harvest Saloon.
Five to 8:00 p.m. at Harvest Saloon, and I'm assuming that there will be tickets for sale at the door?
Tickets for sale at the door.
Okay, all right. Meeting notifications. A regular Board of Education meeting, work session, will be held Thursday, February 9th, 2023, at 7:00 p.m. in the meeting room of the admin building, 18199 Cook Avenue, Strongsville, Ohio. And a regular Board of Education meeting will be held Thursday, February 23rd, 2023, 7:00 p.m. in the meeting room of the admin building, 18199 Cook Avenue, Strongsville, Ohio.
And Ms. Housel, we also have two special meetings coming up prior to the February 9th. So, one, January, Tuesday, January 31st, 6:30 here, and then the next one is?
February, at 6:00 p.m. Sorry to interrupt, George. The February 8th at 6:00 p.m. has been posted. We're finalizing the posting for the Tuesday, January 31st, so that will officially go out most likely tomorrow.
Tomorrow.
But the February 8th is officially posted, and that one will be for the purpose of executive session to discuss negotiations.
Thank you. All right, executive session, we do have need for executive session.
Yes, to consider the employment and compensation of a public employee and to prepare for negotiations or bargaining sessions with public employees concerning their compensation or other terms and conditions of employment.
And we need a motion. And we need a motion?
Yep.
Would somebody like to make a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Motion by Ms. Kilbane, second by Ms. Stavcek. Any discussion? Hearing none. George, take a roll.
Ms. Kilbane?
Yes.
Ms. Stavcek?
Yes.
Ms. Bissel?
Yes.
Mr. Miko?
Yes.
Ms. Housel?
Yes. Motion carries.
And with that, we can adjourn the meeting.
No, no, we, with that, we enter an executive session at? 8:35 p.m.
We are entering into executive motion at 8:35 p.m. We see no? Executive session at 8:35 p.m.
Or motion, whatever.
I don't know. I don't know. And we made it. We see no reason for further business after that, so we will come back and we will adjourn at that time.
Correct.
All right, have a good night, everybody.